If I can have everybody's attention, I'd like to call the February 19th meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education Board. I would like to welcome everyone here. I see that we have some Boy Scouts, maybe what troop are you?
Troop 457 of Midway United Methodist.
457. We welcome you. We're so glad you're here. We always love it when we have our youth to be here and be interested in the government and how things work. So, welcome. And if you have any questions when we're finished, any of us will be glad to answer for you. If we could all rise now, Dr. Bearden is going to lead us.
Good evening, everyone. Words of inspiration for tonight, this is from author and journalist Mitch Album. He said, "So many people walk around with a meaningless life. They seem half asleep even when they're busy doing things they think are important. This is because they're chasing the wrong things. The way you get meaning into your life is to devote yourself to serving others. Devote yourself to your community and devote yourself to creating something that gives you purpose and meaning." Please join me in a moment of silent reflection. And the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have before us an agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Yes, ma'am.
A motion by Nancy and a second by Ann. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay. First on that agenda is recognitions with Fonda Harrison.
Good evening. I'm excited tonight to be able to present the recognitions for this evening. We have one recognition tonight, and that is for the 2015 Georgia High School Science Teacher of Promise. This is awarded to teachers at each level, elementary, middle, and high school in the state of Georgia, and it's awarded to teachers who have one, two, or three years of experience. They answer questions. They're recommended for this award. And we are so excited to have a teacher from Forsyth County to be recognized at the high school level. This year for this recognition, we have, let me find my notes here. Sorry about that. Mr. Stephen Nichols from North Forsyth High School. And if you'll come around, please. I'm sorry. How did I say Nichols? I had Nelson written. I apologize. Stephen Nelson from North Forsyth High School. As part of this, Mr. Nelson received $500 for being recognized at one of the levels at the state level for this. So, congratulations. Great job.
Congratulations.
We also want to recognize anybody that's here to support him tonight. So, if you could stand up, anybody that's here.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Why don't we do that after, after this one right here?
Okay. We have before us a consent agenda. I assume that we've had it and everyone's looked over it and we're ready to vote on it. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
A motion by Ann and a second by Tom. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Okay. And now we have public participation. Do we have any?
No.
Okay. We have no public participation. Next, we have our presentation and discussion items. But if you were here for the spotlight performance, or if you would like to, we're going to take a couple-minute recess. If anybody wants to leave now, would be the time to do that. Otherwise, we would be glad for everybody to stay for our whole meeting. items. And first is the audit report with Mr. Dan Jones.
We have for you tonight the FY14 audit report. And Mr. James Vince with Malden Jenkins is here, and he's going to present the final information to you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's James Vince. I'm a director with Malden and Jenkins. We're the audit firm that worked with you all on the 2014 audit. I'm here just to kind of go over those results with you real briefly. As part of the process, you all are responsible for putting together the financial statements. And as the independent auditors, it's our responsibility to come in and audit those financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. What we've done is we've come in for your fiscal year ending June 30th, 2014, and we audited those numbers. And we were able to issue an unmodified, which is also called a clean opinion, on those financial statements, that they are materially correct in accordance with those standards. Clean opinion is what you want to have. And we were able to give that again this year. One kind of benchmark that we like to look at, if you have your financial statements, I think you have them electronically with you, it's looking at your fund balance, page 15 of the report for your general fund, which is obviously your main operating fund. We usually try to look at that, and you want to see kind of your unreserved, unassigned number be around three months of your annual operating expenditures, just to kind of get a gauge to see if you're doing well. And you'll see your number for your general fund was about $33 million, which is around eight months of operating costs for you all. So, you easily clear the three-month benchmark that we like to see. So, that's a good thing. Through our process, we worked with Dan and his team, and they did a good job. We didn't have any difficulties working with them. They do a great job of, excuse me, great job preparing the information to allow us to get in, do our job, and get out, issue the reports. There were some audit adjustments through this year's audit. They've been posted to your general ledger, and they are included in the financial statements that you have before you. We did have a finding related to this year's audit and a few management recommendations. Those have been discussed with management and have been gone over, and corrective action has been taken on those where needed. At this time, if you all have any questions, it'd be happy to address them.
Are those the ones that refer to programs that we no longer have? Is that what you're referring to in the corrections? Or was that?
It was regarding programs you continue, that you do continue, yes.
Right. Okay.
Any more questions?
Yes, always exciting.
All righty. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Keep us straight.
Okay. Now, we have the financial report with Mr. Jones.
And we've got the hard copies of the reports. If you'd like to have one, just let me know. We just have gotten them in.
That electronic works.
No, exactly. That works well.
Yeah, almost put me to sleep.
I thought that excited you, Ann.
I deal with that every day.
Okay. Tonight, we have for you the financial report for the month ending January 31st, 2015. This will be our seventh month in our fiscal year. And we started the month off with a little over $96 million. Our receipts for the month were $18.3 million, giving us funds available of $114 million. Our expenses for the month were $15.5 million on accounts payable, and net payroll was $11.7 million. So, at the end of the month, we ended with $87,147,000. And that is 1.3 million more than the same time last year. So, we're a little bit ahead of last year. If you look at our budget, our revenues, we've collected 74 percent of our money. And overall expense is 59.44 percent. We're okay. We're in line with the budget. You can see, we've gotten 97 percent of our airborne tax. But the other taxes, the real estate transfer is almost 64 percent, and the intangibles is 60 percent. So, we're lagging a little bit behind. Hopefully, we'll catch on to that. But you can look through each area and see where we are. I think everything right now is in good shape. List of all the checks for the month. Schools, because of the outages, everybody's been away. We don't have school reports for you tonight. We'll double up on that next month. Sales tax. We had a good month.
Yes, we did.
This was December collections, and I think this is probably the highest one that we've got for this go-around. It's $3.4 million that's collected. And you can see, that's almost 12 percent more than last year at this time.
So, that's our holiday shopping kicking in, right?
Yes.
Shop at home, right?
That money is invested, and we earned $4,166 in interest. We transferred, we had some bond payments due. So, there's currently $30,293,000 in that account at the end of January. And you can see a big spike in the collections. Hopefully, that continues. Our 2014 bond money is invested. We earned $11,000 in interest this month. We had several transfers out because our projects are starting to kick in. So, we currently have $91,687,000 in that account. The '07 bond, we earned $892 in interest. And again, we're starting to transfer that money out as we get started with brand-new one. And there's $6,857 in that one. And '05, we earned $154. And the same thing, this is going to brand-new one, so we're knocking this one down. There's $832,000 left there. Capital projects, you can see that here's all of our funds and how they're obligated. And debt service, there's currently, you saw this lost account, and there's a million three in the checking account. We had, like I said, some big bond payments this month. And there's $31,670 total for making future debt service payments. Any questions?
$31 million?
$31 million, not thousand. Yeah.
Yes.
Little difference.
Okay. Thank you.
The next question is June. Dan, is the next bond payment due in June?
Yes, we'll have some coming up.
Okay. Okay. Next, we have Kelly Pross with Forsyth County and Sonny Mountain Preserve Partnership for nurturing students and scientists.
Good evening. As always, I'm so excited to bring the programs that we work with for science to the board. And this is actually an update to a long-going relationship that we have with the Sonny Mountain Preserve. We're very fortunate to have an informal education provider that's right here in Forsyth County. And I'm going to share the mic with Joseph Doherty from the Sonny Mountain Preserve, and he's going to introduce the members of his team as we share with you the great things that are going on there, including sharing from one of our students who has been a participant in their programs.
She's going first.
Okay.
Go.
Hi. My name is Sri Madhul Denabon in Tewksbury at Sellsbridge Elementary, and I'm going to talk about my experience at the Bear One Over the Mountain program. And I would like to thank the program coordinator, Joseph Doherty. The Tewksburyers at Sellsbridge Elementary took a field trip to the Bear One Over the Mountain program at Sonny Mountain Preserve. We learned lots of cool facts about black bears, and we learned how they used, how they lived on the mountain. We learned that they don't exactly hibernate. They toy poor, which means they wake up sometimes. And we all got our diploma from Bear University, which is another name for the program. My favorite part is when we pretended to tranquilize the mommy bear, which was a beanbag with the fake bear head with the water gun. And then we tranquilized it with the water gun, and then we took the baby bear, which was a teddy bear, and then we put a tracking device and things like that. And then we learned lots of things about black bears, and we were like real scientists. We learned that they didn't really hibernate, how fast they can run, what type of year they're born, and much, much more. This program helps become a wildlife biologist, paleontologist, and ecologist, because we studied soil, fossils, and all about bears. We did a dead mappin' activity where we went outside and found a good place for a bear den, and we learned how to get cub data, which was the tranquilizing thing. And we studied the fossils of a giant short-faced bear, which were extinct 11,000 years ago. We behaved like scientists the whole day. My classmates said it was really fun because they liked learning about the black bear, and we were all eager to visit the program again. This program is important for Tewksburyers because it helps us develop an interest in nature, and you get to know how it feels to work with animals and nature like a real scientist. Thank you.
Good job.
Good job.
Usually, we save the best for last.
I was going to say, it would be tough to follow.
Do we have our pictures up here? I have a USB if it works.
I don't have. I just have that one thing that was sent to me.
Is there a way we could get that up there?
Yes.
That's front?
Back here.
The other front.
You got it.
Maybe. Is this it? It's not it. Where is it?
We can talk about it all.
Okay. Oh, there we go.
Awesome. Sweet. Okay. My name's Joseph Doherty. I'm the outdoor program coordinator of Forsyth County Parks and Recreation, Sonny Mountain Preserve. And I want to introduce our team. Matt Pate is the manager of the outdoor division. Carla, Dr. Carla Behune, is our environmental education coordinator. And we have Jennifer Clinton, who is Miss Everything. She is a naturalist. She is a team leader. She runs our homeschool program. She runs my summer camp. She is a substitute teacher at Lakeside Middle School, I think, long-term substitute teacher. And she's finishing up her graduate degree. And she does a lot, she does a couple of projects, independent study projects with us. And one of them is is that she is helping us with this program called the Bear One Over the Mountain, which you just saw a good presentation of. And she's doing some data for us. We did a pilot study on this program. We brought in 541 students from Mashburn, Sellsbridge, and Kelly Mill. And we gave them a pre- and post-test. And Jennifer, what Jennifer's doing is she's seeing if there was an increase in science learning due to coming and participating in this program. And she has, we haven't finished that research, but the preliminary data is stating that, yes, there was science gained, science learning, I believe is what we're calling it. So, how this all came about, about 16 months ago, Matt came to me, and he's like, you know, we're doing really good stuff with our environmental education program, but I feel like maybe we could do better. Can we reach more students? Can we reach more youth? And he kind of tasked me with that and challenged me and said, hey, can you make this happen? And I was, yeah, I'll see what I can do. The first thing I did was I did an internal review of our programs. And what I found was that, yeah, we can do a better job at reaching out to the youth in Forsyth County. One of the things that we've done because of that is that we started an advisory committee, a school advisory committee with the help of Kelly. Kelly's been extremely supportive through this whole year. This is about a year project that we're working on. And Kelly helped handpick some of the science teachers from middle school, elementary school, high school. We met once a month to, just so they could guide us. And what is it? How can we do better, reaching the youth and working with the youth in Forsyth County? So, with that, we all brainstormed. We did research. We talked to a lot of different folks, opened up dialogue. And we hired Carla, which was probably our smartest thing that we did. And we decided what we want to do is we want every Forsyth County student to come to Sonny Mountain Preserve and go through one of our programs. The resources there are incredible, right here in our backyard. And then with that, we're like, well, how do we make that happen? What grade? All students? And because of the information we got from the teachers at the advisory committee and talking to other teachers, it was like, third grade was like the magic grade. That was the one where teachers were saying, we're having a hard time finding field trips to go to that match our GPS standards. And we're like, well, we can do that. And so, that's what, that's what happened. And that's how this came to be. And it is called the Bear One Over the Mountain program. It's a three-hour program. What we want is we want every third grade student to come to Sonny Mountain, go through this program. And we want that to happen at no cost to the students. And that's why we're here. We're here to talk about that, to open up dialogue, and to continue on our vision, and hopefully get the support of Forsyth County Board of Education to make that happen. We feel like that this partnership is, would be extremely important. And I'm just going to read to you why I think it would be important. Giving every third-grade student an opportunity to participate in the Bear One Over the Mountain field trip at Sonny Mountain Preserve would create a vibrant partnership between Forsyth County schools and Forsyth County Parks and Recreation. This partnership would foster students and teachers' connection to place, community, and the local environment while increasing students' lifelong ecological literacy and commitment to public places in their communities. The Bear One Over the Mountain, the third-grade specific field trip, would provide resources to expand curriculum, enrich the classroom, broaden students' engagement, and reinforce scientific concepts and skills. That's what I believe, and I wrote that for you guys. I just wanted to read it instead of talk to you about. And you got to see a third-grade student who actually went through that program and his experience with that as well. Sri is also our youngest member of the Forsyth County Science Club that we've started also, because we wanted to reach out to middle school and high school students, which is a hard population, harder than the middle schools. And Sri showed up, and of course, we're like, yeah, of course you can be a part of this. And that's for another time, the Science Club. We'll talk about that. But what I want to do now is let Carla come up, and she's just going to briefly talk to you about the curriculum and more about kind of the education and GPS standards behind it. So, thank you so much for letting us come and present. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Joseph. Thank you. There is surely no better way to hear about the program than from a student, so I'm glad Sri could be here to share that. And pictures are just worth a thousand words here. But anyway, I thought I would hit some of the highlights just to give you a better idea of what our program is like. As Joseph said, third-grade standards fit so well. And we know that teachers are incredibly pressed for time, and that sometimes one field trip has to do it all. And we decided that perhaps we could do it all. And we looked at the third-grade curriculum and thought about it. And we heard from our teachers who told us that they wanted their students to be scientists. They could cover the content, but they weren't quite as comfortable having their students become scientists. So, we decided, again, we could do that. We could address the process science skills. We could address real-world experiences. We could even, perhaps even, give them some career choice exposure. And then we had some of the materials and some of the special wild places that we could share with our students. Knowing students' interest in animals, we thought, how about a charismatic megafauna, is what we call it. And the black bear really fit the bill, because the bear used to be a part of the Forsyth County area here and is not so much anymore, except when he or she gets into trouble. So, we thought that would be a good opportunity to illustrate the loss of habitat that's so much a part of the third-grade curriculum. But we discovered that the black bear was indeed a really good fit to take us through the third-grade science standards, both the content and the characteristics, the habits of the mind and such. So, we figured out a way to make our scientists, our little scientists, as Sri put it, they could be wildlife biologists, and geologists, and paleontologists, and ecologists. And I hear our naturalist staff talking about, you're an ologist of some sort. And by the time they've been there for three hours, they are convinced they are an ologist of some sort. And that's exactly what we want to have happen. In consultation with a bear biologist from the Georgia Department of Natural Resources, we were further convinced that the bear is indeed a symbol of the last natural places. And to us, that's what Sonny Mountain is as well. So, that seemed a good fit with, with our own goals as well. We found a good model in the Florida black bear curriculum, so we didn't create everything from scratch. We had something good to fall back on. So, we needed a science and action program and a true experience that illustrates all the many facets of science that I think teachers are always challenged to do in a classroom setting with time constraints, as I said. So, we offered the opportunity to use tools and the language of science to practice some of the science skills that real scientists use, and to understand more about a local community's resources. So, often, they understand the rainforest and know nothing of what's in their own backyard. So, we thought this was another good opportunity to help illustrate that. And we hope that, and teachers have told us this, that there's something to take back to the classroom. Many times, a field trip is just that. It's a one-time experience, and you don't have enough to build from. We think this is a very rich experience that students will be able to talk about for quite a while. And just briefly, I'm going to tell you about the components that we have in the bear program. And probably, the best way to do that is to give you some examples of what the students do. When they are ecologists, it's a guided hike through our forest. They measure tracks, bear tracks, with a trundle wheel that we've laid out. They hunt for scat or bear droppings. This is very exciting. They determine the food sources by looking at different kinds of acorns, which ones are sweeter, why bears prefer some over the other. They measure a big hollow tree to see if a bear will fit. They do a group shared drawing, and we look at Sonny Mountain kind of before and after, and we sketch in houses and cars and roads and say, what happened to the bears? And they come up with their answers. We also talk about how to stay safe in bear country. We have too many encounters these days, unfortunately, as the bears lose habitat. Then, we go on what we call a semi-guided exploration of soils and fossils with our geologists and paleontologists. This is a bit of looking at a museum collection, some of those supplies that teachers told us they didn't have. So, we use a soil auger, and we take soil samples. We compare textures. Where would the best berries grow that a bear might want to eat? We use bear claws, a garden trowel, and dig in an old rotten log to see if there's something yummy there to eat, if you were a bear. We magnify and sort fossil samples. We look at models. And we practice observation skills comparing the giant short-faced bear that you heard about, a prehistoric bear, with the current black bear, and why one is extinct and why one isn't. Lots of thinking going on here, and we like that. And I think probably the highlight is, as you saw in the pictures, going into the model bear den. It's actually so realistic, we can't convince some of the students to go in there. But that's okay. They work their courage up. So, we take out the cub, who's actually weighted like a real cub, and we measure the cub's weight. We put a pretend radio collar on it. We look at its fur to see if it's healthy. And they hold that teddy bear just like it's the real thing. We have convinced them. So, and we're teaching modeling. So, and we're teaching modeling. This is just not, you know, play-acting. We're teaching that scientists, real scientists, use models. And they attend Bear University, where they have a chance to use a KWL chart and actually ask questions, what they've always been curious about bears. And then we have other specimens for them to see. Like, you'd be surprised how much mileage you can get out of a bear claw. Let me talk about that. They want to know all sorts of things. We get rid of a lot of misconceptions, which happens quite frequently. The feedback we've gotten from teachers is it's a nice blending of outdoor activity, hands-on centers, and instructional time, which tells us that we're, we're doing a bit of those learning profiles where we're, we're surely meeting the needs of different students at different points in time. And we think that, that serves the purpose well, because we hear teachers talking about, I didn't know she knew so much about dinosaurs, or I've never seen him lead a group activity before. So hopefully, in that variety of experiences, we're addressing a lot of different learning styles and needs. And I think finally, my favorite quote really was, the students loved being spoken to as if they were real scientists. So we feel like this has a lot of potential, a lot of, a lot of growth, a lot of further study, but we hope that it's really going to meet the needs of those third graders. And thank you for this opportunity.
Yeah, that feels, that fits right into our career pathways, doesn't it, Kelly?
Yes, so I just wanted to share with you what's going on with that. We really look at expanding it. Every time I talk about another grade level, like, wait, slow down, third grade, third grade, just start there. But just really focusing in on the gem that we have right here in our backyard, that we tend to go elsewhere for those informal education opportunities, and we have such a great opportunity here.
Yeah, I played growing up in DeKalb County. We had Fernbank, so I spent a lot of time over there, knew the trails, go on the weekend to classes and learned, and it brought it to life, you know, my, my passion about applicative learning. And this is it. So that's really nice to have it in our backyard.
So two things. Because it's aligned with the curriculum, you're helping, also helping out the teachers because you're preparing the work for them ahead of time, so it's more than just a one-day program? And do you find the kids are enthused enough that they enjoy the mountain, that they come back with their families? Are you seeing repeat visitors?
Yes, I think that's evident even from our, our special speaker that we had, that they, they didn't know it was there. They had no idea the Sonny Mountain Preserve was there. So, and I know that Matt's even talked about how, anecdotally, they can hear, oh, yeah, we're here this week, this is what we did. So parents get the whole revision of it when they come back out to the, to the mountain.
Sounds like a great program.
And they have our time keeping me out of the stuff. We've had a few meetings over there in the big room, and I always get distracted on the stuff.
You're the one letting snakes loose, aren't you?
That's me.
Yeah.
I just wanted to play.
Thank you for all your work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have something that is new and dear to our hearts this week, right? Inclimate weather drill feedback with Marty Ray.
Yes, if you give him one second to get set up, we'll go here. If you'll flip it over to guests. You did? Okay. Can everybody see? Okay. Good. I almost wanna make a joke about the board meeting tonight being a little bit like some of what we went through today, but what we did today was a little bit on a larger scale than this, so we'll go. But here's what we did after we got through, as y'all know, as a part of the planning for and implementation of the inclement weather days, the new model, we had a drill beginning late December and into January, depending on what schools opted to do. So the original plan was for it to all be on the 5th of January, and instead, we spread it out over time. After that drill was done, we did a survey, and the I-3 team led that up. And the results of the survey fell into really five areas with another recommendation. So I've got six listed, but really five areas. Access and equity, teachers, students, parents, administrators, and then other recommendations. For access equity, what we found was that, well, what we did was we went out and we talked with the social workers and with ITSSs and principals at all schools, and we identified additional students that would need access. We are consulting. What we're finding is we're needing to consult with other districts to do a checkout model for those access points. What we have been doing is just sending the access points home with the students on a full-time basis. And the numbers may line up, that we may have to adjust that somewhat so that we've got more of a checkout model. So we've got that five-day buffer, if you will, and during that time, we might have to do checkout of devices, depending on who's reported the need for access or not. We, so we're doing, getting, or in the process of doing that, we're gonna continue to, to look at external funding sources, and we're also gonna look at ways that we can more efficiently use the funds that we're, we're getting in, to be sure that we're leveraging that full amount to provide full access for everybody. For teachers, we actually heard the most from teachers, which may or may not be surprising. The positive is that there's, it, the, IT'S Learning is a great way to make up for snow days, and they're booking and supportive of that. They do think that we need to provide more support for other personnel like ELL teachers and support teachers. There's some content areas, such as PE and the, the younger folks, that we need to work on developing content that is less iconic in terms of texting and, and discussion boards and that kinda thing, and a little bit more concrete. And then some reported a lack of parental support, which surprised me just a little bit, but we do have areas in, in the district where we've got, where parents are not quite as involved as, as others. And I also think, especially for the elementary schools, we are just on the cusp of rolling that out. They're a little bit behind the middle in the high schools, and I don't think the parents are quite as aware of, of what's going on there. So in terms of actions and recommendations around those different things, oh, and, and additional emphasis on the drill by the administration. Actions, recommendations, additional training for teachers and support staff include training on use of IT'S at the beginning of the school year, especially for the little ones, and emphasis on planner, use of the planner district-wide. And that gets into the students, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. The students really, they were the ones that were like, so what, as Dr. Bearden has noted before. They enjoyed the opportunity to complete the assignments online. And the other thing I thought was very interesting from the, from the results of the survey is that they appreciate the ability to collaborate with each other online. And I get, I see that a lot with my, my son, who's a student in the district, and how much work he does online, and how much I hear voices up in his room at night. So they did say they needed more direction on submitting assignments, and that goes back to the planner just a little bit. And then we had some students who did not participate, some from the lack of internet, which we've been identifying, and then parental support, and then English-language learners. And we're rolling that out and working on that. So for actions and recommendations, teachers are, we're encouraging teachers to provide clear directions and consistency in how they expect assignments to come back in across the district. And that goes back to the planner. And it's especially more so at the elementary level, again, because that, those folks are later enrolling this out. We're also gonna create and implement an action plan for K-1 students to ensure that they're able to log in and navigate. And we're talking a little bit about the, some parent concerns about typing for standardized tests, and we're finding a good marriage between those two. And the kindergarten teachers on their own came up with a plan that in order to increase typing skills, they would also require that the students be able to log into IT'S Learning, which I thought was a good marriage between those two curricular needs. And then finally, we want to work with IT'S Learning to improve the mobile experience, if you will. That was one of the things that came back from the students. Many of them bring, especially the older ones, bring cell phones in, and they're using that for their BYOT. And we want IT'S Learning to provide a more mobile-friendly experience on those so that they have more versatility, more fluency, or more, what's the word I'm looking for? More flexibility in terms of being able to access those resources.
Where does that come from, Marty? The mobile, the mobile part, is that from IT'S Learning, or is that something we, we're gonna do, or what?
It's, it's us encouraging IT'S Learning to do more. IT'S Learning is just getting started in that sphere. They, their focus initially really was on delivery through the web. And mobile programming takes a little bit more work in terms of, you've got to recognize which device is being displayed on, and then how do you render those pages so that you can see everything and navigate? So they are working on that. They have a mobile app that they've rolled out, but there's room for improvement on that one's what we're finding. One group that we were very interested in, their feedback were the parents, of course. The win for us was that, hey, this wasn't as bad as we thought it was gonna be, which I think goes to teachers and every other adult in the room. This isn't as bad as we were afraid it was gonna be. We did have a series of parent training nights. They found that valuable, and they want more of that. They were confused about time expectations. Part of that was because this was a drill, and so different folks did different things. I think for those parents with middle school and high school kids, they understand a little bit more about what's involved. Again, with the elementary kids, there is a little bit more confusion about that what counts, a six-hour day may turn into an hour activity in the evening, and it just depends on the student and the activity and the, the content that's being offered, kinda thing. So we're gonna continue to provide opportunities for parent training and education. We're looking at delivering that through our Safari Montage live video streaming service. We had one school that did that, and we had very positive feedback from the parents on that one. And then we want to really work, and we had a significant meeting before the snow event, to re, really redesign the Forsyth County Schools' parent toolbox and make more resources available through that toolbox, not only for IT'S Learning, but how do these things actually play out in terms of what their students are actually learning in terms of science content, math content, and those kinds of things? And then I think for me, the biggest takeaway message is to really emphasize consistent expectations in terms of where are assignments placed, how do students submit assignments, and that kinda thing, so that they're more worried about the content than they are about trying to figure out how to submit something for a grade and that kinda thing. For administrators, the drill increased the understanding of IT'S Learning, and they also request an increase on training on IT'S Learning and blended learning and how those things come together on the district collaboration days. And so that's certainly one of the things we're gonna be doing, and then also emphasizing the district expectations for implementing IT'S Learning. That we've got a few folks who are lagging a little bit behind on that, and we're kinda pushing them along to help them understand that this really is not just a benefit for, in terms of what we're doing here at the district level, but it really is a benefit for their kids as well, because this is the world that they're operating in. The other category, we increased, found that increased communication expectations regarding the specifics and the drill requirements. We found that we needed to have some sort of county-wide template letter for teachers to send home, to communicate things for, to the students, and developing a, a consistent communication for social media, et cetera. So our recommendation is, is that Jennifer and, and her good folks will be working on that to, to get that a little bit more standardized and clarify the message going out. And then also we'll, also do online learning expectations will be included in the student handbook. And now for the part you all have been waiting for, what happened today? That's my addendum. That's kind of what some folks look like, that, I like this guy. He is just, you know, he's cute, and he kinda summarizes some of how he feels sometimes. We did get a positive email message from one teacher. I remember when I first walked in the door, people were kinda looking at me going, are you gonna change IT'S Learning to something else? And when I said, no, I don't have any change, you know, any intentions to do that unless we need to, and I don't see, didn't see any reason need to, I got this kinda relieved look. We had one teacher today that said, oh, I like this as much or more than Angel. And I was like, oh, we got a convert in, in the crowd here. We experienced, we think about, about a triple of our use of IT'S Learning today, which says a lot about people's really wanting to get on and get access to, to this. They were chomping at the bit, and they were ready to go. I believe the numbers were, normally we have 2,000 concurrent users going at any one time, and today we had close to 6,000, between 6,000 and 7,000 concurrent users. And by concurrent, I mean they are hitting it at the same time, kinda thing. And as a result of that, the system came to a crawl this morning, and we had to shut the system down for just a little while. And when I say we, I mean the company had to, because all of this is on their servers in different places. And so they took the server down and transferred everything to another server with more capacity to bring that back up. And we wanna talk with them because we only see this, these numbers increasing over time as more people, because this was an IC event, and some people were without power. If you can imagine a snow event where everybody has power, but they just can't get out of their driveway, that's probably gonna go up. So we want to, we want to work on that. Otherwise, I would say that everything else today went more smoothly than this meeting has this evening with audio. So we're, I think we're in pretty good shape there. I do want to, after things have calmed down a little bit, do a debrief with the I-3 team to see what we could do better, and, and also work with the teachers, because I'm sure there's been, or will be over the course of the next five days, because students have five days to get everything in, a lot of lessons that they'll be learning as we roll this out, and, you know, continue to improve this process, as well as I think we're gonna get much better numbers on those students who don't have access, and how can we go about providing them with better access? So that's where we are. Do you all have any questions for me at this point?
Just, for my member, weren't we IT'S Learning's first in the US?
Yes.
And are we, I assume therefore maybe still, if not one of the first, we're still one of the biggest?
Houston, yeah, Houston is by far the largest. They came in after we did. We are, if I remember our student count right, we're at 42,000, they're more over 100,000. And IT'S Learning, quite honestly, from what I understand, has had problems scaling up that large. So they do have a capacity issue here. They're used to smaller districts and that kinda thing. And I think what we did today in terms of usage, better mirrors or more mirrors what Houston would be doing with their usage, in terms of those concurrent connections and that kinda thing. And it's, I wanna say that's a lesson that IT folks continually learn, unfortunately. If you remember the, the health exchange, they had huge problems with scale. Our own states having problems with scale with testing, and that was something else we see. There's no excuse for that, I will say that, but it is something that I think should've been more anticipated on their part.
So we pretty much have what we need on our end, where this, they need to beef up their end?
Yes. Though, we did have a problem this morning, the Safari Montage server, which holds our video collection and that kinda thing, because of the power outage, they had to reboot the server. That was taken care of about 8:30, 9 o'clock this morning, and was back up and running. So that was really the only glitch that we saw coming from our end and our technology.
That's good.
Yeah.
What do you think, Marty? It'll take a couple of years before people are using this like it's, it's a norm versus being timid about getting into it?
Um, I wouldn't say a couple of years, but I, I'd give it another cycle, and it'll become more, much more. more, much more just a part of normal expectations. The thing I'm really looking forward to is, is right now, the initial use is more as a storage medium. You know, I'm going to post my lesson plans up here, I'm going to post my PDFs and that kind of thing. And in moving forward, I'm really wanting this to become much more of an interactive experience so that teachers can use it to differentiate for students and personalize that learning. And we are just now scratching the surface on that one, and that's where I see that becoming a couple of years out in terms of really rolling that out and moving forward with that. So...
Great.
One other thought, just to leave you with, I was writing in this morning, and I was reflecting on, on all of this, and I thought, you know, this time last year, there was a real, you know, do we call school off, do we not call school off? Because the consequences for calling school off and then having to make that time up later was a lot higher. And I think this gives us a tool to be able to err on the side of caution. It, it's a lot better for us to say, even with the glitches we had today, that this is much better than having a school bus in an accident because of an icy road. And I think that helps, I hope it helps Dr. Bearden in making those calls. So, anyway, I thank you all for your support.
Thanks, Marty.
You split it back.
Kristin, I think you met with our legislators?
Yeah, Ann and I had the opportunity to meet with our delegation last week on some specific topics, but while we were there, we also went to the GSBA update, and they covered some of the bills that were pertinent to education. I'll just highlight some of them, because there is quite a few out there. But, one that's not actually about trans, about education, but the transportation bill is one we've all been watching, and I think many of us applaud our legislators for looking at transportation and meeting its needs. But, one of the byproducts of House Bill 170 was, in the future, it would change the way SPOLOST collections are, such that we, as a school system, would lose some of the revenue from the taxes on the gas. And as you all know, we use our SPOLOST revenues to pay down our bond debt. So, the way they presented the bill in the beginning was that this would, if you had a SPOLOST that was existing, it would, the rules would remain the same throughout the end of that, for us being 2017, but any SPOLOST from that point on would then change and lose that. That affected school systems, it also affected the county's revenues. For us, it would be in the neighborhood of three or four million dollars a year, which is really a fat solid month or two of collections for us, and for the county would be even more. The bill was looking to allow counties to go back and make up that money in other ways, although school systems legally didn't have that option. So, this week, they came in with a change to that. This, this bill will, has been changing and will continue to change. It's quite a hot topic, as everybody knows from reading the news. One of the things they came back with, it was yesterday, I think they came back, and they, one thing they're coming back with is saying that the, the collections can be changed from one percent to 1.25 percent, which obviously is an increase. I talked with one of our delegation this morning and said, you know, what do you think about that? And their feeling was, for us in, say, Fulton County, that would be a good thing versus maybe some of the more rural counties that don't have as much, that rely more heavily on their gas tax. I want to see the numbers. I would love to see, think that'd be the case. We've asked, and I actually, Mr. Jones was trying to help me as well, we're trying to get some data to see the collections that we do get, how much of that is gas, but we just don't know that, and we haven't seen anything. So, the jury's still out on that. We'll try to be optimistic. So, that is, again, still changing a lot, and we'll watch. It would also had the wording changed, that it said, transportation, the money that could come in, if they allowed us to use it, would be for transportation necessary to move students to and from educational facilities and all accompanying infrastructures and services necessary to provide safe and efficient access. So, I got to believe that Mr. Potts is watching this as well, because if we can't, for example, buy buses or use it for gas, that makes a big difference for us. So, we'll watch that one. Another hot one is the, one the governor, I think, is very much behind, which is the Senate Bill 133, which goes along with Senate Resolution 287 for the Opportunity School District. And the idea there is, there's a lot of failing schools in Georgia, and they're hoping that this bill will address that. There are, it's, again, a hotly contested one. Basically, because it is such a big change, it would allow the state to come in and take over poor performing schools. And the standard they're using is a school that is performing at lower than sixty on the CCRPI for a period of three years. And if you run the numbers right now in the state, there is about, I want to say, well over a hundred, hundred and...
Hundred forty-four.
Hundred forty-four that fit that criteria. This would require a change to the state constitution. That's a big thing. It would take two-thirds vote from both sides. There are a lot of conservative folks that feel that is overstepping the government control, because in this, if this was to happen, the state would have the ability to come in and take over a school system, and that school system would essentially report directly to the governor. They could change the principal, change the superintendent, they could look at their budget, they could change their curriculum, and there are places that might need that. But, it's a, it's a big, it's a big step. The other thing is...
Let me ask you, would it be the school system or just that school? Like, if you had a system that just takes a school, they would just take it away from the schools they were basically?
Yeah. They have, they have, they could take it away. They could partner with the local school system. They actually talked about, one thing that actually kind of made me a little nervous was, they could talk to other local school systems and ask them to, to group in and, and think about that. How would that, if for us, for example, if we were asked to take on a failing school elsewhere, how would that affect, would that affect our ratings and things like that? So...
When they talked about this briefly, we talked with somebody, and they said, but it wouldn't cost anything, but how can it not?
Oh, actually...
Because they're going to have to hire somebody that works at the state level to run all this.
Well, they actually...
There's a hundred and some schools at that point. I think they just said twenty-two.
Well, the whole, the Resolution 287 is all about asking the voters, will you approve to fund this? Because you have to pay for this. They're talking about doing up to a whole, hundred schools total, but starting out at twenty a year. So, that would, if you think about this, it's, it's, there are things that need to be changed in education, but it's not going to be an overnight fix, because this would be on the ballot in 2016. They could take up to twenty schools that first year, if it passed, twenty after that, twenty after that. So, think of how many years out that that is going to be before, even, and assuming that they could actually make a change. So, it's, again, one to watch. The Democrats, this is obviously more of a Republican initiative, the Democrats have come back with some ideas of how to change and make some changes. They're talking about a statewide grant program that takes community schools and helps them out with healthcare, counselors, after-school tutors, things that probably would be good regardless. But, actually, the governor is open to their suggestions, so we'll see if it, if any gets, gets anywhere. There's been a few other small ones. There's been a bill on there about allowing local Board of Educations to allow school bus advertising. When we were down there, Ann, they told us that it was been tabled, although if you look, it's still on there as a, a one to watch. So, we'll see. We're, I don't think we're jumping the gun here to have advertising on our buses. But, there's also one about eliminating the Georgia High School graduation test, and with that, allowing students who did not pass it in the past, in fact, students, you know, well-blown adults who could come back to their local school system, which would be us, and say, okay, I didn't pass it, but now it doesn't matter. I want my diploma. And they said, for some school systems like ours, that could actually be a lot, and it could just be a little bit of a workload for us, but it's a good thing, we believe. Let me see if there's anything. I'm not going to read them all. Another one, I'll just, another hot one was the kindergarten starting age, House Bill 100. That was where they were currently, the cutoff age is September 1st, and that was, I guess, set up back in the day when school started back in September. Now, we're in August, so the idea was to get it more in line with what we're starting at. The legislation, the legislators, we received a lot of pushback on that, because it was to start this coming year, and there was a lot of parents who had their children in pre-K, assuming they'd go on to kindergarten. If this law had passed, they would not be allowed to start, and they've already missed the chance to get into other pre-K programs, things like that. So, our delegation did ask us about that before it got a little hot, and they said, you know, it's past sign-up time. So, they were thinking of pushing it out one year. At this point, it's been pushed out two years, and it's out to start year of August 1st, 2017, and July 1st, 2018. So, they listen to people, and that one seems to be proceeding on that path. That's about it. That's kind of the hot ones that we're following.
The bus, and the bus situation, do you, the employees with...
Oh, yes. The part-time and benefits for the employees that are, are bus drivers, are cafeteria workers, that one, they got a lot of pushback. Senator Gooch was actually pretty outspoken about the concerns on that. I think the whole legislature got a little bit of pushback when it was brought to the attention that they receive part-time benefits as well, and that didn't seem very fair. So, seems like what we think is going to happen is getting kicked down the road a little bit. Our part-time people will probably be able to retain their benefits, although the state may ask us to kick in a little bit more per employee in the meantime, and it's probably will come back up again next year. It's still out there. It's not a done deal, but, that's something we're going to have to really be budgeting probably more for, and maybe long-term look at what to do with that. And, Mr. Potts, your article in the editorial in AJC was phenomenal. It was very well-written. I think that went far and swayed them. So, that's about it.
All right. Any questions? Okay. We will move on to our action items, and first is the adoption of the employee work calendars. Dr. Norton?
I'd like the superintendent to recommend adoption of the employee work calendars at this time for next year. This will help us as we begin to hire particularly teachers, hopefully soon after our job fair.
Okay. All the supporting documents you have on your, on your computer screen, I would recommend approval of the work calendar for the 2015, '16 school year.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Should I move to second?
A motion by Nancy and a second by Ann. Any discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay. And next, we have high school number seven, A&amp;E Design Contract with Mr. Emerson.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I bring for you an architectural, engineering, design contract with BRPH Architects and Engineers Incorporated out of Atlanta. Before I go a little further, we do have two representatives from BRPH Atlanta here, Scott Threes and Yonte Kang. Yonte's our designer on Lambert High School addition, so he's starting to learn what, what he's getting into. But, we have gone before, and we've asked them to develop a contract based on the original program for the Lambert High School design, and above that, we've asked them to look at a few of the tweaks and some improvements to that school design as we're going forward, as well as also part of the packages we put into your board brief, is the addition as an additive alternate. This would take the program Lambert High School to what we're doing with Lambert High School with the addition. This carried the capacity for the school up towards about 2,450 FDE, and that would be treated as an additive alternate. So, we'd have the ability to choose that as we got into contract negotiation for the construction.
And that in part because we're still watching our numbers, and given the time, we'll know more this summer where we're at versus right now.
That's right. As we can develop the budget, we understand that we have the architectural estimates updated for what we're looking at for high school number seven. You know, we had, BRPH actually developed the architectural estimates we used in our facility plan for last year. They looked at the new high school, Lambert High addition, as well as north, south, central. So, they had worked through the preliminary programming on our facility plan and architectural estimates. So, they've now come back, revisited that, looked at some of the things we're asking for, that we've encountered as we've done the new high school programs with the school input, and we've reevaluated that and updated our process as we're going into this project there.
Okay.
I could ask for recommendations?
Okay. At this time, I'd recommend the board approve the architectural services contract with BRPH Architects Engineers for future high school number seven.
Do I have a motion to approve, Dr. Peterson?
So, moved.
Second. A motion by Tom and a second by Kristin. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous?
Thanks, Ken. Congratulations.
Okay, and you're next.
I was looking for something else to do this time.
You don't want to keep the item.
The next time I, item I'm having bring for you, working through with our preliminary submission for the South Forsyth High School, we did identify an error from what we were able to come up with a complete design versus what was actually written into the capital outlay application. And basically, what has happened is, we had identified with the addition at South Forsyth High School that we would have two new science labs to be modified from the old bandroom suite. We're building a new bandroom suite, taking their old space, and would develop two new modified spaces for science. And somehow, the column within the application was identified that one of those new science rooms would be new construction. We totally misread how that would be done. We went back through and tried to evaluate how we could work that back in to the design footprint as we got to 65% for the check set, and we just really couldn't find a good place to modify without messing up one of the other regular, regular classroom units that we have also contracted to do in the capital outlay application. So, tonight, what we're asking for is to modify, revise the original contract application, capital outlay application that we submitted last August, which was based on the conceptual ideas of this South Forsyth project, to remove that one new science lab from the program.
And that is in part because we get a different amount of money from the state for new construction versus modifications or additions.
Yes. The new construction is done at a high rate, because it includes such things as the circulation space and those other entities within the campus under that square footage and value of that new addition, where modification is just the physical Forsyth Lab is a thousand square foot. We earned funding for it, eighty-three dollars a square foot for our Forsyth Lab. So, that's a very fixed sort of number that we have in there.
Okay. So, there's one science lab now?
No, we still have the two science labs we're modifying. We're just not going to build a brand-new one out in the parking lot. We'll still be modifying the spaces as we understood from the facility plan page that was created, and it has description on that page. It says, these two science labs will come from bandroom modification. And we just did not read into, there is the checklist, the number for the eligible earned units that earned us one new construction unit that was added to the application. It's very confusing.
Just a paperwork.
That's why I wanted on this.
So, you knew what you were doing. It just didn't sound like they didn't, what they thought in paper.
Right.
Tim always knows what he's doing.
I'm forgetting what I've done.
Okay. Well, I'd recommend approval of the resolution to revise the FY '16 capital outlay application for South Forsyth High School.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Kristin and a second by Tom. Have any more discussion, questions? Okay. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tim.
Okay. And now we have the lease of portable units.
I would ask that the superintendent recommend that we lease ten classroom, portable classrooms for North Forsyth High School, 26 portable classrooms for South Forsyth High School, and one portable fieldhouse for Forsyth Central High School. And this is a result of the modifications that will be made in these facilities. I can go into a lot of detail if y'all would like.
This is a follow-up to the conversation we had last Thursday night, and we went into some detail at that time to explain the rationale.
We'll be repeating them, and I didn't want to do that.
Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
So, this is just, you need to get started on the construction. You get it done on time.
Correct. There's like, a great example is, is at North High, we've got to build a new bus pickup area, because we're going to be building the building where the bus pick up now and drops off. So, we need to get that done before school starts. And if we wait until the summer to even start on that, I'm afraid it won't be done in time for school to start. At South, there's an awful lot of utilities in the ground that are going to have to be relocated. If we wait until the summer before we even start moving the trailers to let them get in there to do that, I'm afraid we won't be able to have that done in time.
Will these be the ones that have the hall?
Yes. Yes, these are the modular buildings, with the exception of the fieldhouse at Central, obviously.
What is a field? What is that going to be like? Just, I'm just curious.
It, it's a smaller version of one of those buildings. It'll have two pieces put together, and it'll have showers and, you know, that kind of thing, and it'll be tied into the sewer.
Is it the same company that does it?
Yes.
So, this is not an addition of, an additional unit necessarily. It's replacing some of the old ones. We've got some trailers from back into the late 90s, don't we?
We do, and we're going to be phasing those out, and this is part of that.
This is part of it. So, some of it's replacement.
But, we'll be doing some over the summer. This is not the growth that we normally do every year. This is strictly for the renovation.
Just so we can start our renovation projects.
And get rid of some dilapidated.
And we'll be coming back to you with some more before it's over.
The bonus is, we'll get rid of some of the ones.
Some of the ones that are, I've seen some of our older ones, and they're...
Ten, ten at north will be the old ones that will go, and six at south will be the old ones that will go. And we'll move the existing building that's at south now in the gravel...
And we'll move the existing building that sits south now in the gravel parking lot to another location.
That helps. That did help a lot.
Okay, with that, I would recommend approval for the lease of portable units to be used for preliminary renovation work.
Do I have a motion to approve his recommendation?
Salute.
Second.
A motion by Tom and a second by Nancy, does anybody have more questions? All in favor? Unanimous?
Thanks, Chris.
Glad to see us moving forward. Okay, now we have points of information that I'm sure everyone's looked over. Dr. Bearden, do you have anything you'd like to point out?
Yeah, just one thing to add, with the inclement weather days this week, I just want to remind everybody, with the days we lost on Tuesday and Wednesday, we will now make those days up for students and teachers on March 16th, will be a regular student day. April 3rd will be a regular student day. Of course, we utilized its learning to, for today's work. Also, we're obviously monitoring the weather situation for tomorrow very closely, that's a very fluid situation. It has changed numerous times throughout the course of the day. We will monitor it throughout the, the evening and the morning and if we need to make any adjustments, we will do so when we have the information, we think we need to make an accurate decision for, for everybody in our community. I, I do want to publicly thank Jennifer Coraccio for all of her work the last, last few days. She has responded to numerous people throughout our community, making sure everyone's informed of what's going on in a very timely manner. Also, thank everybody for their patience. This has been a very challenging week in terms of the weather, there's been so many changes, literally sometimes on an hour-by-hour basis. And as was pointed out earlier this evening, you know, we're always trying to make decisions in the, in the interest of safety of our students and our faculty and staff and we realize when we do that, that creates challenges for many of our parents in our community and appreciate their patience as we work through this process and hopefully spring will arrive soon.
Well, can we also go on to thank transportation and school safety? I know, I haven't talked to the county and they're working with emergency management, you guys have been cooperating and spending a lot of time together, so.
They have.
Get a good night's sleep soon.
I appreciate you bringing that up, Kristin, and I did want to point out, you mentioned transportation, Gary and his staff have had to make some modifications tomorrow morning for student pickups because we still have areas where our buses cannot get down those roads and families have been contacted, those alternate arrangements have been made, a lot of that work taking place behind the scenes. We had drivers come in this afternoon and drive their routes so they could get a firsthand look at exactly what they would be dealing with tomorrow morning when it's dark, that way we're able to make a better decision on what's most, what's safest for, for students. So I do want to thank Gary for that. And as you mentioned, Todd's been in contact with emergency management pretty much 24/7 and keeping us apprised of what's going on. So it's a, it's a team effort and it's not, it's not always easy, but we're doing the best we can.
I'd just like to amend to all the teams that have been in the basketball finals, the girls losing the guys' team and they were, this weekend I went to the region games and they were really exciting, so we were proud of all of them for what they've done.
Absolutely.
Okay, anything else? Okay, now I think we'll have executive session, do I have a motion to go into executive session for personnel and student educational records?
Salute.
Second.
A motion by Tom and a second by Nancy, all in favor? Any others?
Next.